There you go.
Perfect.
Excellent.
You're good to go.
All right.
Thank you.
We're ready to go then.
I'll give you the sign when the tape starts.
Okay.
One second.
Sure.
You serve along. Good to go.
Thank you. We'll call our meeting to order. And the first thing is roll call. Manager Waller?
Yes.
Manager Winant?
Yes.
Manager Wegeman?
Here.
Manager Preiner here. And Manager Bradley is absent with prior notice. So, the reason tonight is the public hearing regarding Anoka County ditch 5362, main trunk repair report, and water management district. And so, we're going to head and start our public hearing. I would like to welcome everyone who has come this evening. Under consideration is the repair of the main channel of Anoka County ditch 5362. As part of the board's consideration of the repair of the drainage system, the board will also establish the allocation of project costs between water management district charges and ad valorem taxes and the natural nature and basis of the water management district charges. The purpose of this hearing is to receive comments from the public on district's proposal plan to repair the main channel of Anoka County ditch 5362. Please note that our proceedings are recorded. The order of business for this hearing will be as follows. Mr. Tomsek, the district administrator, will introduce a presentation of information related to the district and its management of public drainage systems, the engineer's review of this portion of the public drainage system and the proposed repairs, and a review of the proposed method of allocating repair costs, including water management district charges. Mr. Tomsek will be assisted by district's legal counsel and the district's engineer. After initial presentation, I will open the hearing to public comment. The board would like to hear your comments on the proposed repair and any related matters. The board's consideration of the repair of the main channel of Anoka County ditch 5362 is based on its requirements to Minnesota Statute's Chapter 103E and the board's obligation as drainage authority to maintain the public drainage system. The hearing today relates to the condition of the drainage system, its need for repair, and utility of the proposed repair. Our decision must be based on the merits and utility of the project after considering the repair report and evidence presented to determine whether the work is necessary for the best interest of the affected properties and whether the work will be conducive to the public health and promote general welfare of the watershed. During the public hearing, managers may ask questions of staff or consultants making presentations and of commentators in order to clarify any testimony. In addition, if a member of the public asks a question and a manager believes that a response from the district staff or district consultant can readily resolve the question or enrich the testimony, the manager may ask me to have the appropriate staff member or consultant speak to the question. I will exercise my judgment as to whether or not to allow that discussion. Managers' expression of their positions and general discussion concerning the subject of public hearing should be avoided during the public comment portion of the public hearing. Board discussion will occur after all the members of the public have had a chance to speak and the public comment period has closed. Board discussion may occur and be concluded at this or subsequent meeting as the board decides. If a member of the public would like to make a comment, please stand and address the board when I recognize you. Speak clearly and state your name and address for the record. If you have a specific question concerning the proposed reestablishment and correction of the public drainage system record, we may ask our administrator, engineer, or legal counsel to respond. If you have anything in writing you wish to submit, you can provide it to me before the close of the public comments and I will note it as receipt into the records. To ensure that all wishing to comment on the proposed reestablishment and correction of the public drainage system record have time to speak, I may limit any time, a single speaker, it may be a maximum of five minutes. Please limit redundant or repetitive comments. Would any of the board members like to make any further remarks before we begin? Any of the board members? Okay. With that, we will go ahead and bring Nick.
Yes. Good evening. I'm Nick Tomsek. I am the administrator for Rice Creek Watershed District. We have a presentation here to share with you. Out of convenience, I'd ask if you'd allow me to sit down. I can see the screen here and I'll speak to the slides that you're seeing. With that, Chris, will you advance to the first slide? Can you all hear me? Can you hear me way in the back? Very good. So, the presentation outline we have here to cover tonight, gonna cover things to date, the standard by which the board will make its decision, the drainage system and the conditions of that, proposed plans to repair, how we'll fix it and make it the way it's supposed to be, total project cost and the allocations of the cost, who's going to pay for what portion, the anticipated schedule to get that work done, and then, of course, comments from the public to be brought into the record. Please save those to the end. Hopefully, I believe we have some great information for you to explain it, but your questions and comments are welcome. So, Rice Creek Watershed District, recognized by the RCWD, is the Public Drainage Authority for the district. What this means is that the district manages 116 miles of public ditch and tile systems on behalf of the landowners. On the screen, you can probably see some very faint squiggly lines. They are throughout the district. Like I said, 116 miles. These systems were established in the late 18 and early 1900s. They are owned by the people who receive public benefit or drainage benefit from the systems. They initially petitioned the county government to establish the ditches. And when the district was created under a subsequent state statute, the responsibility for its management came to the district. As you can see, these ditches, because water flows downhill, right, they cross political boundaries of our municipalities and counties. And as a watershed represents an area where all the water drains to a common outlet, it is most practical and reasonable for the district to be the authority and exercise it on behalf of the owners. So, we manage the system. We intend with that obligation to protect the landowner's right to drain water to the public ditches. And the other activities that the district does is we do have water quality and flood control programs at the district. And we also have a regulatory program when folks want to build things on the landscape or roads are rebuilt and such. So, why maintain the public drainage system? Well, it provides predictable drainage and stormwater management. After rainfall, we've kind of come to expect that the water is going to leave the strait and run off the landscape and will recover to a pre-event condition. The district as a drainage authority is responsible and we're required to manage the system by law. The ongoing maintenance of the system is a cost-effective approach than completing a full repair, meaning if we can go to an individual spot and remove an obstruction so that the water flows, that's cost-effective and we should do it that way. But at times, when full repairs are necessary to the system, when those conditions in the ditch system require it, it must be completed by our authority and obligation. Next slide, Chris. So, the drainage system repair process. We follow this process, the steps shown here. Every time we complete a drainage system repair, the highlight are the things that have been completed to date. So, we confirm the public system features. That is, we look back at those historic records and reconcile all the way up to the current date to make sure we're dealing with the definitive of what the system extent is on the landscape. We decide on a repair approach. Could we go out with a backhoe and simply do a small portion? We're also mandated not to waste the public's money, correct, and just do what is necessary to achieve those goals. And so, we have to come up with an approach. We have to consider it against all the laws that exist on the landscape that are applicable to what we do and those types of things. And then, how will the repairs be paid for? Will it be ad valorem across the entirety of the watershed district and the taxpayers? Will it be subset of that that drain directly to the drainage system? Or a combination of the two? Next slide. Thanks, Chris. So, general location of the system. It's the main trunk and six branches and some laterals. Chris, I don't know if you can use your cursor to kind of show some of this. We've done previous repairs to branches one and two on the system. I can't tell from here if you... Is something showing?
I don't think I can show my cursor on there.
Well, let me just say that in some other sections of the system, we've done some repairs to it already, to the system. We've looked at it comprehensively and broke the work down into reasonable segments of work.
You can point to the various locations.
Go for it. So, branch one and two, we did work on.
Branch one over here is generally east of Lexington.
Yep.
And branch two is generally west of Lexington, going up to the north all the way up to County of 14.
And the water generally flows from Blaine into Circle Pines and then outlets into Golden Lake. And the upper portion of the district is kind of the... Or this area is the urban fringe, right, where all the new development, the new schools, the residential development is all coming onboard. So, the scope of the repair here, I think, is shown with the black square. That is basically from I-35 down underneath Lexington and over to Golden Lake. Thanks for doing that, Chris. Next slide. So, we touched on a few of these. ACD Anoka County ditch 5362 activities to date or recent activities. In October of 2011, we were doing that historic review and gathering all the documents. These are held at the county recorder's office, like the deeds to your property and that sort of thing. So, we gathered those. We had a process for the correction of the record to assemble all of those materials for the definitive of what the system is. As we spoke, the repairs to branch one and branch one lateral one, as well as branch two, have been completed 2014, 2018. And then, next slide, it continues. Thank you. 2017, we completed inspection of the main trunk. That would be from that where it crosses under 35W down to Golden Lake. And a report was generated by our engineer on that investigation. The charge allocation, what's the probable cost and how should it be paid for, was completed. And then, the public information meeting, which is a process by which the district looks to engage the public kind of outside of this formal setting to just chat about what we're doing. And then, here we are tonight. This is a statutory requirement that we hold a public hearing and we certainly want to hear anything you'd like to share. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to John Cole, our attorney, to talk to you about the standard for the decision.
Madam President, members of the board, members of the public. As the President said in her opening remarks, there is a standard by which the decision tonight to repair the drainage system needs to be made. That standard is laid out in Statute's Chapter 103E, which is the state's drainage code. For this particular system and this particular repair, the board has to determine based on the evidence presented whether those repairs are necessary, meaning is the ditch or is the ditch not functioning according to its as-construted hydraulic efficiency? And the engineer will touch on that during his presentation. And then, second, need to determine whether or not that maintenance is in the best interest of the system. And that includes consideration of alternatives to a reconstruction type of repair or limitations on the scope of repair. For these particular systems as well, the district has incorporated or associated the system with what's called a water management district. That special authority that they have as a watershed district to determine a... Basically, an area which consists of the drainage area of the ditch within which they can use charges rather than assessments to pay for the costs. The way that the drainage code is set up and the way that the watershed law is set up, public ditches need to be self-sufficient. They cannot be paid for except under special circumstances by complete taxation across, like the state, for example. So, they really look at what's the portion that's of local benefit versus what's the portion that is of broader benefit? And within the watershed management plan of the district, the district has allocated between those portions of costs that will be associated or charged back to landowners within that drainage area based on the runoff characteristics of their land and those portions of costs that will be paid for by the district as a whole, meaning people throughout the entire watershed. And then, for special features, reconstructed municipal features and those sorts of things, there may be a special charge to the municipality individual or specific municipality as to those charges. So, the two items under consideration tonight are the repair. So, is it necessary? Is it in the best interest of the landowners? And then, secondly, is the allocation of charges consistent with what's been laid out in the watershed management plan and reflective of the burdens placed on the drainage system by the runoff characteristics of various lands within the water management district? Next slide. With that, Madam President, followed by the engineer unless the board has any questions.
John, were you gonna read the publication information?
Oh, thank you. Sitting here, right in front of me. In order to comply with statute, we are required to provide specific notices that are laid out in the statute. For this particular hearing, we are required to publish notice. We're required to post notice and we're required to provide mailed notice, not only to individuals who may be subject to the charge, but also to any municipalities that might be subject to the charge and to certain state and local governmental units. So, we published a notice of the hearing tonight in the Pioneer Press newspaper on August 4th, 11th, and 18th. We also published in the Blaine Spring Lake Park newspaper on August 9th, in the Quad Press newspaper on August 9th. We sent a postcard notice to the owners of all properties within the water management district, so all owners of property that will be subject to the potential charge. That was mailed on July 26th of 2021. We also provided mailed notice to the cities of Blaine, Circle Pines, Lexington, and Lionel Lakes. We provide mailed notice to Anoka County and the Anoka County Highway Department, the Anoka Conservation District, the Minnesota Department of Transportation, the Board of Water and Soil Resources, the DNR, the Metropolitan Airports Commission, the United States Army Corps of Engineers, and those were all mailed on July 26th. We also posted notice of tonight's hearing on the district's website beginning on July 26th and it remained in place through the date of tonight's hearing. We posted at our office on July 26, 2021, and that remained in place. And then, we have a group of individuals who have requested email notice of these types of hearings and we emailed the notice to them on July 26, 2021 as well. That's it. Thank you.
Any questions from the board for Mr. Cole? Okay, then we'll go ahead, Chris.
Thank you. So, I'll begin talking a little bit about some of the conditions that we've observed when we've been out on the site along this drainage system. And this has been in a number of different site visits we've done and inspections out there and other activities we've done, including surveys. First thing I'll talk about is the area that is west or upstream of Lexington Avenue. This is kind of the location of ditch that's just south of Fleet Farm. And you can see from the photos here that there's a lot of stagnant water in the ditch. One of the ways you can tell that there's stagnant water is seeing all the algae growth there. It usually doesn't grow up like that if the water is moving. And these aren't real recent photos. I'm sure if you took a look at it this summer, it might look a little different with the low water levels that we've had. But I believe this is, you know, from about maybe two, three years ago, we had these photos. Water was up at that time, but again, wasn't moving. A lot of vegetation that is choking that channel in that area. And you can also notice, and I'll talk about this in a little bit, a number of trees that are along the edge of the ditch. That definitely creates a challenge for getting into the ditch for making those repairs. As we move a little further down the ditch, we see a lot of deadfalls, trees that have fallen into the ditch. There's been a little bit of work that the district has completed already to help remove some of these deadfalls, but that's something that's occurring literally every year down there. There's a lot of trees that have reached their life expectancy. A lot of these trees end up being box elders, cottonwoods, those kind of trees. And they generally don't have a real long life. And if they start growing out of the ditch bank, a lot of times, they aren't real long for this world. They might last for a while, but when you have the number of trees that you have out there, there's gonna be a number of them falling down every year. A lot of snags in the ditch, some of it from those deadfalls, maybe other brush that has fallen into the ditch or even growth in vegetation in the ditch. Once you get one of those obstructions in the ditch, then everything starts collecting by that obstruction and pretty soon, you start getting sediment in there and then you have a major blockage in there, as you can see from these photos. As we work our way further downstream, we get down to Carl Eck Park. We've got a few different blockages that we've noted down there in the middle of the channel along the banks. If any of you have been down to see this ditch, it may be often referred to as a ravine based on how deep it is. Some sections of the ditch are anywhere between 15 to 20 feet deep. Certainly creates a challenge for getting equipment down there. Also creates challenges in trying to maintain the stability of the ditch along both sides. It's fairly steep. Some places, it's a one-to-one side slope, basically 45-degree angle out there. So, that does create a challenge for keeping vegetation growing, especially when you have a tree canopy out there that shields or blocks out sunlight down to the lower areas of the ditch. So, in general, the conditions we saw, as I mentioned earlier, obstructions and snags, sediment that builds up by these obstructions, these steep banks that we've seen that have an erosion issue and create challenges for access, and trees and brush along the ditch that run virtually the whole length of the ditch on both sides that make maintenance impracticable in its current condition until some of those trees are removed. So, in our repair report, we came to conclusion that the repair to that open channel bottom is necessary. And along with that, we... In order to be able to complete this work, some bank modification is going to be necessary out there. So, in our repair report, we've identified a few different construction activities that would be occurring, first of which is the tree and brush clearing along the right-of-way of the ditch. It's one thing I'll note and I'll talk a little more about that right away in a bit here. There is a corridor along the drainage system that was necessary to construct the original ditch. The landowners, at the time at which the ditch was constructed, were paid damages for the use of that ditch and that area does become a right-of-way that exists with the ditch for the district to be able to manage the drainage system and complete maintenance and inspection. So, in order to be able to get that access, there's gonna need to be some tree and brush clearing required. Other activities would include that excavation of the accumulated vegetation and sediment that's in the bottom of the channel. One of the things that also is required in order to be able to get access is the construction of an access bench or basically a slope going up the ditch bank to allow the work to be able to be completed. This bench will be created primarily on property that is owned by the city of Circle Pines and it'll be used to provide access to get sediment from the bottom of the ditch back up to that city property. That city property is located along Lexington Avenue. It's on the east side of Lexington. And that would be where the spoil or sediment material from that portion of the ditch would be placed. Another thing to note is that there is a very tight corridor in here with which residents are located adjacent to the ditch. So, one thing we need to be conscious of is management of that spoil in those locations to try to be able to have it so that it is not going to be creating a problem or obstruction along the side of the ditch. So, I have a few photos here of some of that work. Again, the removal of obstructions, cleaning, and then the spoil management, as I have shown here. This will be particularly the case down by Carl Eck Park. The project will require some of that sediment from the ditch and that area along the park be placed along the edge of the park where it will be graded and leveled. I mentioned earlier about the right-of-way of the drainage system. Again, that's that area that was necessary to originally construct the drainage system. We've determined that that right-of-way is approximately 125-foot corridor. That's measured as centered on the channel. Generally, about 35 feet from the top of the bank on either side of the ditch bank. There is a city-owned corridor. You may be able to see that on the graphic up above it. It may be a little hard to see, but there are some black lines shown on the aerial photo there that denote the property boundaries. And if you look along the ditch, the ditch is shown in the dark blue line on the screen on either side of it. There is a black line running parallel to that. And that is the outer boundaries of that city-owned land parcel that covers over the ditch. That city-owned parcel is not the extent of the right-of-way of the drainage system. It really doesn't have anything to do with that right-of-way, but it does overlap that right-of-way corridor. But it does overlap that right-of-way corridor that is the district's purview in managing the drainage system. So, having this right-of-way does grant the watershed district the ability, not only for, to access that corridor, but also be able to place spoil or sediment that comes out of the ditch onto the edge of the ditch banks. One important thing to note is that although there is this right-of-way along the drainage system, it's not a public access. The right-of-way is for access for the watershed district and, and the district's consultants and other authorized, people authorized by the district to access to inspect and maintain the system. So, it is not something that is used to allow people to have, walking along there for a trail or anything like that. The district does have the ability to use that entire right-of-way, but we are not planning in our construction plans to clear that entire corridor or use it all. So, we are intending in some areas on the top of bank to leave trees along the top of bank or along the bank edge in some cases. But as I noted earlier, there is going to need to be some tree clearing. Talked a little bit a while, that tree clearing is important, not only to get access to that drainage system for doing the maintenance, but as I mentioned earlier, with all those deadfalls that occur along the way, it's necessary to prevent those blockages in the future from those dead trees from falling into the ditch. And one of the most important things I touched on just briefly is getting sunlight into the ditch to be able to grow vegetation. Right now, you have quite a thick tree canopy in there during most of the day or in some cases, almost the entire day. The area under that tree canopy is blocked from direct sunlight. It makes it a challenge for some of your long-riddled grasses to be able to grow up in that area and help hold the bank in. So, what happens is you have just a bunch of trees, some scraggly brush, and then bare ground in between. And that creates an erosion issue, requires additional or more frequent removal of sediment from the ditch and more frequent sediment going into the city's sediment basin downstream. And so, be able to open that up a little bit will help preserve that and decrease that amount of sediment going into the ditch and downstream. So, in order to get that done, we'll, we'll need equipment to access within the channel of the ditch. Plan that the contractor that the district will hire would be coming up the ditch bottom and working from that ditch bottom on either side to remove those trees. Generally, those trees will be cut to within about two inches of the ground surface, but we are not going to remove that rut wad in the ground. We're going to leave that in there. That will help stabilize the ditch. If we were to try to grub that rut mass out, it would lead to destabilization of the ditch. So, that will help hold that in place while other vegetation is getting established along ditch banks. Talked about earlier about how we are planning to place the sediment, or we refer to them as spoil materials. As I mentioned earlier, one of the primary areas for that spoil management is the city property that is located just to the east of Lexington Avenue. On this map, it shows up as that pink triangle area on the map. Again, we're using that in order to avoid having to place that sediment or spoil up on the ditch banks right next to that residential neighborhood. And there's some challenges to doing that with the equipment that would need to be used along the ditch. So, as I mentioned earlier, the plan would be to dig in a slope that would come from the ditch bottom all the way up to the top of the bank in that city park. That would allow that to occur. We arrived at the solution in coordination with the city of Circle Pines. We met with the city staff and talked about different options for placing spoils. And where we arrived at with the city with their concurrence was to use this approach of going with that sediment generally upstream of the park, going to that city property location. And then the rest of the sediment along the Carl Eck Park would be placed along the ditch bank and spread out in those locations. Again, the end result of all this will be a lot less tree clearing needed, a lot less grading required in backyard areas for those landowners. So, in our plans that we have included with our repair report, we do show that access bench that slopes up from the bottom up to that city park. And as I mentioned before, it does fall entirely within that city-owned property. One more thing I'll talk about are a few outfalls from city storm sewer. When I refer to outfall, that's what I mean is a, the city storm sewer where it outlets into the drainage system. Usually there is an apron that is on the end of a pipe where that drains to into the ditch. There are a number of these outfalls that have eroded and are in poor condition along the drainage system. In order to be able to repair these, it makes sense to take advantage of having a contractor on site that is already going to be doing work along the ditch and having them replace and repair those outfalls. So, we have coordinated with the city of Circle Pines. This is intent to save the money altogether for the public. This would be intended to reduce the scour and erosion occurring in some of these locations. And this work will be funded by the city of Circle Pines. You can see on this one photo here that where it's washed out underneath that outfall from the city storm sewer. Here's another location where that apron has actually fallen off into the ditch. It's undermined all the way around the pipe. Eroded probably from the top down in this case. Worked its way all the way around underneath the pipe, and that caused the pipe and the apron to fall off down into the ravine there. Another location you can see where the pipe has started falling back, and it's kind of hard to see from this photo, but essentially the bank has been cut back away from the bottom of the ditch. So, I'll talk a little bit about the benefits of the proposed repairs. Certainly, the work will be largely intended to remove obstructions from the public drainage system. This will allow flow to occur, not only through that segment that we're working on, but quite a bit farther upstream. And the effect of this will be that water levels in the open channel on an average year, probably not in a year like this year, but in more of an average year, you'll have those water levels decreasing by more than a foot. And this will, effect will go way, way back in the ditch because once you get west of Lexington Avenue, there's probably about a mile and a quarter segment of ditch that has zero grade to it. It's dead flat for that far. So, you can imagine be able to get the ditch cleaned out further downstream here. How far back that effect will carry. We had to review as part of our repair report what some of the potential environmental considerations may be and how the project might affect a few different environmental factors, including wetlands. And we determined that based on the work that we're completing, no wetland impacts will result from a project that would require mitigation. The other thing we looked at was cost, and not only for the project, but for long-term. And certainly, maintenance costs in the long-term will be decreased as part of the project. The district does complete maintenance every year on drainage systems that it manages. And certainly, this is one of the things that the district is very concerned about is once it does get these major repairs completed, that the drainage system is routinely maintained into the future. And certainly, this work that is proposed to be completed will not be the end of work that's needed along the drainage system. But the work we're doing now will pay dividends in the future of decreasing that future need. As I mentioned before, we'll be establishing vegetation along the ditch banks. We'll be seeding those areas in that we're working, try to get some of those more long-riddled plants growing up. And again, erosion and sedimentation will be reduced, both in the ditch and downstream in that city's sedimentation basin that is just upstream of Golden Lake. And then finally, that the project, by clearing those trees out, will enable access into the future for maintenance and also for future inspection. It's not easy all the time going in to do inspection in some of these areas where you have that thick vegetation and tree growth. So, in our repair report, we do evaluate the likely costs for the project. And again, I say likely costs, all these costs are subject to current pricing and construction cost trends that occur. But what we've determined is that the cost of the project as a whole, including engineering, legal fees, and then we also add in a contingency of 20%, that's something to account for unforeseen changes or additions to the contract that may occur. But we estimate the, that cost to be about $493,000. As was touched on earlier by Nick Tomczek, we do break down the costs in these kind of projects between several different entities. First of which I'll note is on here, the city of Circle Pines, we have allocated a cost of $75,000. That's largely for those stormwater outfalls that I mentioned earlier. We also have a cost of approximately $167,000 to ad valorem. What ad valorem means is the cost that's allocated to the entire watershed district through the watershed district's annual levy. And then a final component would be the water management district. This is about 60% of the project cost is allocated to the landowners that drain into the drainage system. And these landowners extend all the way out into Blaine, as far north as County Road 14. And that cost is approximately $250,000. Again, arriving at that $430,000 project cost. The water management district, as Nick touched on before, its purpose is to allocate costs for repairs to the drainage system. Important thing to note is that this isn't the first time that we're proposing to enact a water management district charge for the landowners draining to the county ditch 5362. This is actually the third time. We've had two different charges for those previous repairs that were done on Branches 1 and Branch 1 and Branch 2. There was a three-year period from 2014 to 2017 where the charges were enacted for Branch 1, and then from 2017 to 2020 for Branch 2. So, we're again proposing that there would be a charge that would be in a three-year period. And the determination of that charge is based on the amount of runoff leaving a given property. So, it's based on the area of the land owned by that property and the type of land use. A land use is like commercial, industrial, given that they have a lot of hard surface, create a lot more runoff than a site that is essentially metal. And so, they get charged at varying rates depending on those land use. And again, that land use comes out to a per-acre charge, which is then applied to the amount of acres per property. We do have a minimum charge of $25 per household. That's a minimum in order to be able to recoup costs for enacting the, the charge. It's kind of the smallest practical charge that we can enact. That $25 is typical of most of the small lot residential parcels in this water management district. And we also have deferred charges. This is for additional charges that would be enacted if a property has a change in land use. So, we have a number of parcels, particularly up in Blaine to the north there, where they have been an undeveloped use, and now they have become development, either commercial development or residential development. And so, when those developments come through, they get an added charge because they're going to be letting off more runoff volume at that point. And that becomes due on those properties at the time of the development. This map here shows the approximate extents of that water management district. Again, a large portion of this is in the city of Blaine. Also covers portions of the city of Circle Pines and Lexington. And there's a small portion that gets into Lionel Lakes. So, the timeframe that we're suggesting at the moment, the current timeframe would be in August, September this year to, for the board, consider ordering this repair, enacting those water management district charges. Then we would be looking at in September to certify that charge to the county, Anoka County, for tax collection purposes in the years 2022 to 2024. Then the fall of this year and into the next year, we'd be looking at preparing final construction plans and specifications, and then going out for bids shortly thereafter in the winter. And then the plan would be to complete the repairs at some point during the summer of 2022. And again, we're trying to coaline the construction that's occurring with some of the street projects that the city of Circle Pines is completing in the area. This is done at, specifically at the request of the city of Circle Pines. So, we would try to limit that disruption as much as possible during one construction season. So, that's all I have, and I can address any comments from the board at this moment.
Anybody on the board have comments or questions for Chris? Well, seeing none, I think we're going to go to the public. And we would like to hear from you. And again, please state your name and address for the record and when you begin your comments. And then we'll be taking the comments and then, oh, sorry, you got somebody over the handup.
Do you want to step up to the microphone?
Certainly can. Name and address for the record.
My name is Donald McPerse. I live at 80 West Road. I am west of the ditch, east of Lexington Avenue. You said that there was a 35-feet right-of-way from the ditch into my, towards my house. Was that before or after the city gave us that property?
This would have been approximately in 1917.
Okay. The city gave us that property. They got tired of running up and down there, putting in a fire road every year. And my property now goes to within seven feet of the drop-off. And I'm on the high side of the drop-off. How are you going to get in there and get all those trees out of there? Are you going to drive up the creek and get them? Or do I have to tear my grandson's treeless treehouse down that's now 15 feet from the edge so you can come along the edge and reach down 40 feet into the bottom of that creek?
That's a good question. So, as we're working along the ditch and we are developing these plans, we recognize the challenges of working along that right-of-way corridor and how close some of those objects are along the ditch. And so, in order to avoid that, we are planning to work the construction equipment up the middle of the ditch. And then, as I had showed there, we create, we're planning to create that bench along the slope onto the city property portion,
Right.
working the equipment up there to put sediment there. So, we are not planning at this time to be working on the top of the bank. We are going to be working on the side slope next to the properties.
Okay, yes, because I can see on the other side, that's fairly, fairly steep. They're both, both sides are steep, but it's fairly steep and there's fences. Those people's fence lines are right up against where the drop-off is. And like I say, I've got 15 feet there. Yeah, you might want to take a look at that, because once you get past my place, past 80 West Road, where the, I think it's called Oak Park, right in there, that's, that's all pretty much open. That's all, except watch out for where the kid dug holes, because they're deeper than you.
Thank you.
I've fallen in them.
Anybody else? Please come forward. Go ahead.
Hi there. My name is Jeremy Belts. I live at 257 Stardust Boulevard. And so, from what I'm hearing, it just sounds like it's a lot of tree removal, debris removal. My section, I live right next to Lexington, next to the Circle Pines, just south, like right behind that church, right on North Road in Lexington. So, there's like a tunnel in my backyard. Is there going to be any type of construction with that? My land actually sags, and I don't know, and it's part of the watershed. My land actually sags, and I don't know, and it's part of the watershed. Do you know anything of it? I might be too specific.
I would have to take a look at a map with you to determine where exactly you are in relation to the ditch.
Right.
And if you want, after the public hearing, I could have a chat with you directly about some of that. I could try to bring up some maps on my screen here, and we could go over what we're planning to do in those areas, but.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Chad Johnson. I'm at 251 Stardust Boulevard, so right behind my house, almost runs parallel with Lexington. I'm curious, I'm the same gentleman's sort of question. First off, since due to COVID, I've been working at home. We've got this big street project coming up. I was planning on next year, working for my garage, which happens to be in the backyard right next to this ditch. I have to, I have to support, you know, things for my job. I, I can't handle the noise. I, you know, it's really challenging to try and deal with, deal with all that in a professional atmosphere. I don't know. I can't go back to the office either right now, so it's still closed. So I'm just kind of concerned with, logistically, I don't, if I'm going to have to perhaps maybe change my, you know, leave, I don't know where I could go to do my job now that I'm working from home. But last time they did the ditch clearing, I don't know, it was 10 years ago, stuff was falling off my shelves due to the vibration of the equipment. So that's something I'd like you guys to sort of think about and ponder. Another thing is, you mentioned those pictures were two to three years old. Is that right? Some of those pictures were two to three years old?
No.
In my mind, when I'm doing maintenance, I always think of things from a maintenance standpoint, if it needs to be maintained, I would have done it two or three years ago. And we're telling, you're telling us this repair's been gone on for at least two or three years. It's needed a repair. It seems like it's gone a quite a duration for needing this repair. Is it, is it really not flowing? And how much are you taking out of the ground, the earth to dredge? Looks like you're dredging it to me. That's what I would call it. Is that, is that appropriate, that statement? Are you dredging it? Is that, is that what's, is that what's going to happen?
So, yeah, I can address that question first and I'll work back. So I wouldn't consider to characterize it as dredging it. It's excavation for maintenance on the ditch. So we're going to be removing accumulated sediment in the bottom and vegetation regarding the noise levels. It is going to be noisy. You're going to have equipment running through there, both excavators, you're going to have tree sawing equipment. I would guess the tree equipment would be quite loud. And, you know, what we can do for you is if you provide your contact information, we can coordinate with you as we're getting closer to the project time so you have a better idea of what the timing is of the contractor being there and when they're going to be operating in that particular location. But we really won't have a good fix on that until next summer, and the contractor is about ready to start working out there because it's, you know.
Sure.
It'll be a while before we can know those exact dates.
I get it. It's a disappointment to me because my office is currently in the front of the house, and then I was going to move to the back of the house, like I said. So it's quite the conundrum that I'm personally in. So you mentioned you're going to be demolishing or destroying or taking down trees, whatever. My assumption would be then if you're going to remove trees, you're going to replace some. I was curious on what age trees are you going to use? Are you going to use better quality trees, deciduous trees? Probably what, two or three-year-old trees? Or how are, how is that going to, how are you going to maintain that consistency? Because that's one of the, that's one of the reasons why I purchased a house, because I love the trees in the backyard. It was, I found it very appealing to still be in town and have such an incredible backyard. I was just hoping that that wasn't going to be destroyed, not, you know, at least hopefully regain at some point in time with overgrowth over a couple of years. I've been here since the late 90s as a resident and taxpaying citizen here, so I'm just concerned with that. And then, then the last part of this, unfortunately, behind my house, the fence ends basically behind my house and my neighbor's house. And it picks up probably, again, probably 300 and 350, 375 feet down. There've been a lot of kids back there playing, and there's been bikes that have ended up. I've talked to the cops about it here, four or five bicycles that have ended up in the ditch. I'm, my big concern is if you leave these stumps two inches up or whatever, and one of these kids fall down in their bikes, it's a pretty steep ditch. Do the math on that. Are you going to, are you going to block that off? You going to put a fence on that or not?
So in answer to your question about the replacing of trees, we are not intending to replace the trees in the ditch. Again, part of the reason for removing them in the first place is that they're, they have a tendency to fall down after a period of time, and they're blocking sunlight down to the ditch to be able to get vegetation growing up in the ditch. So, yeah, it's not our plan to replace the trees. And regarding fencing or anything like that for the stumps, we are not planning to do that either. Again, we're going to be, as I said, flush cutting, at least within two inches of the bottom, might be a little closer, but our contract will state at least within two inches of the bottom. And, you know, certainly, we're going to be, again, getting vegetation to try to establish along there.
So what you're telling me is you're not going to replace the trees and all the noise buffer that I have from the trees and the beauty on top of it, and it's not going to get replaced? That's why I purchased a home 23 years ago, was for the beautiful backyard that I have.
We are, we are not going to be replacing the trees, but again, we are not planning to remove all the trees either.
What percentage of trees are you assuming you're going to replace or destroy or remove? What percentage of the trees from the ditch? You got 35 feet from the side, you said. Are you going to remove 80%, 70%, 60%? What? What are we thinking?
Our plan is to remove the trees from the bottom of the ditch up to a location where the tree contractor can reach up with their equipment, boom location, you know, roughly about maybe 10 to 15 feet above the bottom of the ditch, and in that corridor, remove the trees. And then we're also going to be removing trees from the corridor along that access bench. We're going to cut that in in order to be able to get up to the ditch bank. And then we're also going to be clearing trees along the ditch bank in some locations, such as on the city property, on that area that is west of Lexington Avenue, and then down by the city park.
All right. And this is my final question. Post-repair, next year, after the following, this, this next year, what does your maintenance schedule look like? Are you going to, are you going to maintain it in a more appropriate way rather than every 10 or 15 years and have to destroy all the trees or what? That's what my concern is.
So the district does have a maintenance program set up that it spends on repairs and maintenance along all the drainage systems that it manages. I can't tell you right now what that maintenance schedule is going to be, look like for that area of ditch coming up into the future. A lot of the maintenance is, centers on how much the ditch fills in with sediment or how much tree growth there occurs or other factors on site. So the district doesn't have a schedule on each system that, on a particular branch, we're just going to do a rotating year-to-year schedule of maintenance. It really depends on that inspection that the district does regularly along the systems to inform whether that portion of the ditch has a need for maintenance or not. Generally, when we do these larger-scale projects like this, and this is, you know, I guess, kind of typical of what we'd be doing for a larger-scale project where you have to kind of reconstruct the ditch bottom, there tends to be a little more maintenance in those first two to three years as we're trying to get that vegetation reestablished in the ditch banks.
How many years was it? Has it been since, since this was done? What, was it 10 or 12 years ago, I want to say?
The district has completed some minor maintenance along the ditch bottom. I believe that was like about maybe three, four years ago. We had a contractor clearing some trees out and doing a little bit of sediment maintenance. But a full-scale excavation like we're planning here, this type of project, I'm unaware of a similar project that's been completed along the drainage system like this.
It has to.
Again, the intent would be is that if maintenance occurs frequently into the future, then the need for a more extensive repair like this is unlikely, or at least longer out in the future.
Okay, well, I'm telling you, this, something similar happened near the 2010 timeframe, and I, plus or minus a year or two, I don't, I can't even remember. But the trees, the trees were, many of the trees were gone, same kind of thing. And it took years, four years for them to, five years for them to sort of grow back. And now I've finally been happy, and then I guess this is where we're at now, so. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anybody else like to comment? Please come forward. Name and address.
Good evening. My name is Al Ponson. I live at 72 East Golden Lake Road. I don't know anything about this, so I'm really just here to get educated. As a matter of fact, until tonight, I thought WMD stood for Weapons of Mass Destruction. I'm curious to know, does the watershed district not have any permanent maintenance employees?
Yes, we do. Ashley's right here, she's one of them. She's a, yeah.
But nobody who would be out taking a fallen tree out of a ditch or?
Madam President, I think I can answer that and maybe provide some additional information that'll be of interest and benefit to folks that are here. Is it Mr. Ponson?
Correct.
Okay. The district does not have any contract maintainers, so nobody that runs a chainsaw or a backhoe or an excavator. They do have Ashley, who is the current inspector for the public drainage system. They have an obligation and do have an inspection program where they inspect 20% of their drainage systems every year. And they have multiple drainage systems, many, many miles of both buried tile drainage system and open ditch drainage system. And the goal of the district on a system like this, so if you looked at the history, you can see on ACD 5362 that there has been a major, I'll call it a reconstruction of Branch One, a major reconstruction of Branch Two, and now we're doing what I would call a major reconstruction of the main channel. The goal here is to get, in a, in a, in a programmed way, because there's multiple systems they have to address, they're trying to balance the costs out over time, so it's got to be budgeted as well, is to get those systems, those major reconstructions occur, and then once those major reconstructions occur, rely on the district's inspection schedule to direct what we then call minor maintenance. And the important thing for the folks in the audience to know is that when we do a major reconstruction, that's when we impose those water management district charges, but the minor maintenance program is funded from the whole district. So all of your neighbors in Ramsey County are helping to pay for that once that gets up and running. But for this, this major effort to reconstruct this and get it in shape again, closer to its as-constructed hydraulic efficiency, that's when we do the water management district charge. So we don't have our own maintenance employees, but we have an inspection program, and then we have a pool of contractors that Ashley has access to, and it's budgeted, that she can call if there's a tree down in the ditch after, you know, as part of that routine maintenance, then she can hire somebody to come in and take care of that. If there's a bank that sloughs, we can get a contractor in to pick that up. And then that, once we get into that minor maintenance regime, that's paid for by the whole district and it's budgeted across the whole district.
So what differentiates requiring a meeting like this before you can spend the money versus having somebody remove a fallen tree?
Right. With, the difference being that is because this is a major action, it's a major reconstruction, and because it's going to be paid for at least in part by a charge to the folks that are placing a burden on this, on this ditch, they are required by statute to have a hearing in that instance. Whereas the other activity is part of their annual budgeting process, they have a hearing on their budget. And they give notice of that hearing, but it's a different, that's general budget versus a very specific action, which is this reconstruction that we're talking about for this portion of ACD 5362.
I think I have two more questions. One is short. If I live on top of a hill, why should I pay $25 for drainage rights or whatever?
The board has determined that the effort it takes to maintain the system is related to the amount of water that comes into the system. And since you live up on top of the hill, your water is getting down into the system. And particularly, you know, since you have a residential property, which is different than, you know, its land use, you know, 110 years ago when the ditch was established, which was, you know, some sort of a, you know, meadow or hayfield or what have you, that's additional water that comes down the landscape and going into the ditch. So again, the system is based on, or the charge is based on the runoff that everybody contributes, whether they're up high or down low. It's different than if you were on an ag area where we were doing an assessment based on the benefit of the drainage system. That would be a different way they would be looking at that. But the district has determined that the, the allocation should be by contribution of water to the system.
Even if your yard is all grass as opposed to blacktop?
Correct. Even if it's grass, it's going to contribute some runoff down to the ditch. It's not going to be a lot. You certainly aren't, your charge is going to be a lot less than that same quarter acre if it were on a commercial or industrial site.
And then my last question is, is any of this almost half a million dollars the result of the housing construction that's going on north of, on North Lexington Avenue? Individual housing or group homes or assisted living facilities? Or is this kind of routine maintenance that would happen even if they weren't building up there?
So I would say that the, the need for repairing the system is independent of those current actions that are occurring up there on Main Street and those areas that are developing. Those developments do, as a whole or collective, generate more runoff going down to the ditch. And so that's one reason why we do have that deferred charge that gets allocated to those properties when they redevelop so that they pay an additional share into the system once they have that changed land use. But for the current project we're at, this is a project that has been needed for a while. And one other thing to note that's important is that the watershed district has a list of these large-scale projects that it intends to be completed in the future. It's in their watershed management plan. These corrections that need to be made along the systems have been known for many years, but it takes time for the district to be able to go through the process of getting these done and then having the funding generated to be able to complete the work. Because again, a substantial portion of this is being paid by the district through its annual general fund levy. So the district in general has been completing one of these major system repairs each year. This coming year, it'll be 5362. This year, it was a ditch system that is down in Ramsey County. The year before that, it was a drainage system that was in Washington County. So the district has been systematically knocking off each one of these known deficient areas, but it's taken time to do that.
Madam President, also, we could note that part of what made this particular project right at this time is that we're able to coordinate it with the known city road projects that are going on. And so we're able to gain a little bit of economy of scale there because they're doing, what they're doing in the city corresponds to what we have to do on the ditch, and those, they overlap. So the timing of this one kind of married up properly. But your question about, does the development influence this? It, maybe not this particular action, because we've known about this for a while and it's been in the queue for a while. But the ongoing development within the district certainly does influence how the district has to make decisions to maintain these systems. Because this district as a whole, if you look at the whole thing, has limited outlets for stormwater. And there is a high demand for economic activity within your cities to try to develop, redevelop. And every time that happens, between the city's stormwater system and other development, there's a demand placed on these conveyances. So this, the district considers the ditch systems to be the major stormwater infrastructure for the whole region. And without it, a lot of the cities would have no place to put their stormwater. So it clearly does support development, and development does contribute to the need for ongoing maintenance of these systems. But as to this particular repair, this is something that has been on the district's radar for many years, and it's just finally worked its way into the schedule.
Okay. Now, just as a clarification, one of the charts on the screen said deferred charges, and then later on it said payable immediately upon building. Is that a contradiction or?
No, no. What that means is if, let's just say, there are still some areas of the district where there is, there are large parcels that are still in agriculture. Even some of them are tucked in around here. But there are plans in the cities, the city development plans, the long-term plans. the long-term plans and comprehensive plans, that that's designated for commercial industrial development. Well, it would be unfair of us to charge that person based on runoff characteristics like it was a parking lot, because right now it's a hayfield or a meadow or whatever it is. So we look at that, and we say, okay, today it has runoff characteristic X. Thirty years from now, or ten years from now, when it develops, it's going to have runoff characteristic Y. So we're going to charge you for runoff characteristic X now, and we're going to defer the difference between X and Y. And when you come in for a permit to develop it in ten years, you're going to have to pay that difference upfront. So basically, those properties end up paying the rest of you back. It goes into the ditch system fund, and they end up paying the rest of you back for the charges that were deferred, because eventually, they're going to be taking up more capacity.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question first. Do you say you live on a hill? Where is that? I was, I just asked, I was, yeah. Okay. Next, dear. Go ahead. Please come up.
Hi, I'm Mike Gaines from two fifteen Stardust Boulevard, Circle Pines. My questions are regarding the area behind Karlech Park. The first one is, a couple of people mentioned there was some ditch maintenance done several years ago. And at that time, they came through with a backhoe and just cleared the ditch and dumped the soil, the spoils, and almost creating a berm on the north side. And what happened then, that prevented natural runoff from flowing to the ditch and made a, basically a swamp and killed a lot of trees. So this time around, you mentioned that some of the spoils would be left on the north side. Would they be graded so that this berm doesn't get any bigger?
That's a good question. So on any of these repairs that we complete, we do have within our plan details for the contractor to follow, so that they do level those spoils off. There may be, in some cases, a little bit of a hump that's in those areas, but we also have a detail in the plan showing a cut in that bank to allow the water to be able to come in from behind any of those humped up areas to be able to get back into the ditch. And oftentimes, what happens is if you have that spoil material, oftentimes, it's, you know, mostly organic material that does have a tend to settle after a period of a couple of years. May not go all the way down to what it was before, but certainly, it diminishes any sort of pile that's there after it's had time to settle. But we do make sure that in that interim period, that any, that the water does have the ability to get from that backside area back into the ditch.
Okay. So if we see that as property owners in the future, after a year or two, and we see a lot of standing waters, do we call, call the Watershed District?
Yes, yep. Ashley would be the person to talk to. Again, she's the inspector.
Second question. You mentioned building a bench that's going to be used for equipment to help move the spoils away. Based on the pictures, it looks like the bench goes right over the ditch. Is, are you gonna, is there going to be a bridge or something over the ditch to?
No, we would be, we're actually going to be cutting the bench into the side slope of the ditch. So we'll start off at the very bottom of the ditch, and it'll work its way up the ditch slope. It'll be cut into that existing ditch there as it works its way up to the top of the bank.
Chris, let's call it a ramp.
A ramp?
It's a ramp from the bottom of the ditch to the top of the ditch along the side.
But this picture, it goes, it's perpendicular with the?
No, that wouldn't be the intent. It's not going to be going perpendicular. It's actually going to be going up along the ditch.
Okay, and it's on the north side or the south side of the?
It's going to be on the south side, the southwest side of the ditch.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Sure. Come on up. Name an address.
Good evening. I'm Steve McChesney. I live at forty-three Center Road. My property isn't affected. I'm actually City Council member here in Circle Pines. I don't know if we go back to it. I was just curious about the cost breakdown. I think it was like a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for administrative and legal costs. Just wondering why we're spending about twenty-five percent of the project on those two things. I have a second question once that's.
You know, it's, there's a few different reasons for it. There's a lot of process that's involved with this. And a lot of upfront work in getting both the repairs done, coordinating with the city on where we're going with it, and other things. Again, it's an estimate that we have, but on projects like this, it tends to be a fairly substantial cost, particularly when, you know, although the project cost at four hundred and ninety thousand seems like a lot, there are a lot of other drainage projects that get to be larger, and the engineering costs for those kind of projects tend to be smaller relative to the overall project size. But like I said, there's a lot of upfront costs, including having meetings like this that are part of that one oh three E process.
Sure. Is there a breakdown of that in the packet? I'm just kind of curious how it kind of breaks down.
We don't have a breakdown of it.
Something we can get access to, or citizens can get access to, since that's part of the taxes we pay, right?
Absolutely.
And then the other question, I don't know if it's a typo or not, but just kind of looking through the table of the WMD charges, it says the charge here is twenty eighteen. I'm just wondering if that's a typo, or if there's some different formula that's used based on what it would have cost then?
Ashley says, yes, that's a typo.
Okay. Yeah, I'd just love to kind of see a breakdown. I understand what you're saying, but twenty-five percent of a project like this go into not anything, I mean, I, not saying there's not work being done, but, you know, there's a lot of physical work being done. It just seems pretty high to me. So, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No, the total is?
We have a number transposed there. I'm sorry. It is four hundred and ninety-three.
So it's not four hundred and twenty-nine dollars?
No, no, no. It's, we have a transposed number on this slide. It's four hundred and ninety-three.
Anybody else like to comment, speak, questions? No, go for it. Come on up. Sure.
Some people say I got too many words. I just-
Name an address, please.
Rick from Metro Gun Club, Blean. John, first of all, years ago, I had a conference with Judge Hoffman in Nooka County called Ditch Fifty-three Sixty-Two, the most controversial ditch in the history of Minnesota. So there is a lot of issues, a lot of work. You know, there's concern about the new development. Mr. Ponson brought it up on one hundred and ninth and Lexington. And then you've got, you know, the infant campus and all this other stuff that's happened over the years. Now in Naples, you've got all that new construction. I mean, I won't go into all the details. So I have a question. One is, is this a one-time increase for those properties involved all the way up the line? Because it's a long stretch. And how many properties are within this area? Do you already have that figured out?
Ashley might know the number of properties within the Water Management District. I think it's in that listing.
Yeah.
I think there's around four thousand properties. Six thousand acres, four thousand.
Yeah, roughly four thousand now.
So I imagine the distribution will be figured out as we see how it all comes out. But I'm, do you already have obtained bids for the project?
No.
So you need, you have to do that?
We have to do the plans and specifications, as Chris indicated, this late fall/winter. And then we'll put it out for bids. And when the bids come in, they have to be within a certain percentage of the engineer's estimated costs. If they're over, we are required to reject them and rebid. There's a possibility they might be lower. And so again, everything that you see in this presentation, notwithstanding transposed numbers, is based on the engineer's estimates.
Okay. Good to know. Do you have an emergency fund? You know, for example?
That's the sixty-two thousand of contingency for this particular project, yes.
Okay. Okay. I was wondering about that.
And the district also, when you look up there, that ad valorem, that comes from district-wide. The board does have some flexibility to adjust that. So if there was a, you know, an unforeseen cost that they felt was better carried by the district versus carried by the Water Management District property owners, they would have the discretion to be able to move that money from, or take money, or add money to that portion of the cost as well. So their, the contingency is the emergency fund, but there's some flexibility in how they ultimately fund this, which is part of the discussion they're going to have tonight, and then part of the ultimate discussion of when they certify either the charges or the tax in coming years.
Good to know. I know a lot of the citizens, and myself included, are concerned about the new development in the area and how much of an impact they may have made changes in the area. I mean, some of them are rather significant. For example, I've had meetings with Steve Wellington. I've had meetings with Mr. Pulte. I've had, I won't get into detail, but I've had meetings with the landowners and kind of know what their thinking is and what their thought basis is, and some of the stuff that we've had in the past, controversy and so forth. We've got our settlement agreement in place. You guys have probably examined that and know about it. I won't get into detail. But that's something that everybody is just kind of concerned about, how this whole thing's going to lay out in the end. Needs to be done. Needs to get maintained. It needs to be, and I guess I don't envy the task. So.
I missed where you're from, or who you represent?
I am the owner of Metro Gun Club in Blean.
I'm sorry, I'm not hearing you.
I said, I am the owner of Metro Gun Club in Blean.
Oh, Metro Gun Club. Okay.
Right across the street from that developer. So, and Ashley and I, and we have discussed things. And the mayor of Blean is kind of watching all this and working with us, so is the council. So we're kind of keeping a close eye on it. But we're just curious. And this was a very influential meeting. So thank you for your advice.
Could we add one more, one more just comment to that, that I think, again, would be beneficial for the folks that are here, is that in addition to kind of managing the conveyance, the district also has a fairly strict set of rules related to development, stormwater management, and rate and volume control. And the goal there is to force development to manage its own water, so that it doesn't place an unnecessary and unreasonable burden on those downstream conveyances. And in fact, it's not happened here yet, but there are areas of the district where, and this is, I'm joking, but I'm not, where when a developer shows up, we hand them a soda straw, and we say, you can do whatever you want with your property, as long as you can put all of your water through this soda straw. Because in those areas of the district, that's how limited the conveyance is. So the district is trying to manage this from both ends. One, it's trying to keep the conveyances operating as efficiently as possible. And then two, it's trying to manage and impose rate and volume control on new development, so that those limited conveyances aren't overwhelmed. And I know, you know that, because you have drainage challenges in your part of the district in particular. This, your part of fifty-three sixty-two, Ashley.
Okay. Anybody else care to speak tonight? Any questions? Anybody else? Okay. Well, seeing, does anybody have any written materials you'd like to submit?
We do have a written comment from MINDOT that we should probably, at least read in the record or address. And do you have that, Chris? Any of you?
Yes. All right, Madam President, this is an email that I received from Beth Newendorf. She is the District Water Resources Engineer for MINDOT, located at fifteen hundred West County Road B two, Roseville, Minnesota, five five one one three.
Let's note, too, MINDOT has to pay for their contribution or their burden they place on the system. So that's why she's commenting.
Thank you, John. So in the email, Beth writes, I have the following comments on ACD fifty-three sixty-two main trunk repair report and preliminary charge analysis. The map below showing MINDOT land use doesn't match the records that MINDOT has for right-of-way in this area. MINDOT also has some stormwater ponds in northwest and southwest quadrants of I thirty-five W and County State Aid Highway fifty-two. The report indicated that those areas would be exempt from the ditch repair charges per the screenshot below. And then she further indicates, the below map indicates the right-of-way line and the stormwater ponds that MINDOT has in this area. And she provided a screenshot of the area showing the ponds. This is the area where Level Avenue is crossing over I thirty-five W. And that was the extent of her comments. So our response to that would be, and just for a little bit of background, as John indicated, roadway authorities, including MINDOT, Nooka County, and each of the cities that are in this area, they also are sharing in the cost for the, their share of the flows that come into the system, again, a lot of which is from those roadways. We do have an exception on some publicly owned parcels for regional conveyance stormwater ponds. And that, the rationale behind, having that exemption for those regional ponds is that by having a regional pond along the drainage system, that has the effect of holding that water back, that negates the effect of the water on that particular property. But that exemption is just for that property with which the stormwater pond is located. What was referred to by Ms. Newendorf were a couple of stormwater ponds that were in the interchange that were constructed at some point for the purpose of limiting water as a result of improvements to the roadway construction. And so in most cases, those ponds would have been required by Rice Creek Watershed District rule to be located there. That was not the intent of the exemption. Again, that exemption was for regional stormwater ponds rather than ponds that were required for district permitting purposes. And so in that regard, we do not consider any of that MINDOT right-of-way property to be in that exempt status from the right-of-way, or from the Watershed District charge.
Any further comments on this? Any further comments from the audience? Okay, I guess we're going to close the public comment portion of the hearing and move on to board discussion. Okay, there are some options on page four, if the board wants to take a look.
It may be beneficial, Madam President, just to run through that standard one more time.
Okay.
So first question is, are the repairs necessary? And you received a report from your engineer identifying the various obstructions to the system and inefficiencies of the system. The second inquiry is, are the repairs in the best interest of the drainage system? And do they support the general health, safety, and welfare of the district as a whole? And then as to the water management district charges, are they consistent with the basis upon which you established in your Watershed Management Plan, which was to establish them based on runoff characteristics from the various properties, number one? And then was the distribution of allocation between ad valorem tax and Water Management District charge accurately reflective of what you adopted in your Watershed Management Plan, which was based on percentages? And so when staff prepared this, we took those costs and we divided them according to those percentages as they're laid out in your Watershed Management Plan. And then again, as to the comments today, there's been several as to ways and means and methods of construction and concerns about what the condition will be after they're done. Those are important comments. They may or may not influence the board's consideration of the factors for the establishment and ordering of the repair and the ordering of the Water Management District charge and the allocation. But just by way of review, those are the, kind of the items that are important in your decision-making tonight.
All right. Well, let's start with a motion. And we'll have discussion. We have the recommended action, and underneath that is a motion.
Yeah. And if nobody has any discussion, I mean, we have talked about this affair- Yeah, and if nobody has any discussion, I mean, we have talked about this affair.
Well, we'll have discussion after the motion's made too.
Right.
Yeah.
But would you like a?
Go ahead, Chris.
Okay. Madam President, I move that we direct staff to prepare findings in an order consistent with the proceedings, including responses to all comments received through the public comment process, that the findings in order be written to order the repair and the repair of the main channel of Anoka County ditch 5362, consistent with the engineer's recommendation and allocate costs of the repair, including imposition of Water Management District charges as recommended, and that we recess this hearing to the board's regular meeting on September 8th, 2021 at 9:00 AM in the Shoreview City Council Chamber, 4600 Victoria Street North, Shoreview, Minnesota, or by adjournment to an appropriate time on the board's agenda at which meeting we will consider findings in an order for the proposed repair.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Further discussion? Well, I think it's well prepared. Engineer's done his job. Mr. Claude has presented. And I don't think there's much more. I mean, we've had years of research, so I think we have come to conclusion at this point.
Yeah, I, I don't.
Manager Waller, question, comments?
Well, Madam President, I want to thank all the folks for coming out today. It's wonderful. I've been to a few of these where there's, nobody comes.
Yeah, many.
A few of these where they're standing out the doors. And yes, I remember the 5362s, it went to 1 o'clock in the morning or 2 or whatever it was, many years ago. So I'd also point out to you that we had today our, a hearing about the taxes. At our regular meeting. And one of the statements that was made in there was there would be a small increase, I think 0.9% in the general tax next year, or at least that's proposed at the moment, hasn't been finalized. But it was also pointed out that there's been so much growth in the houses that have been built in this area and not just here in Circle Pines or in Blaine, but in Lionel Lakes, in Forest Lake, Hugo and such, that the general taxes that you'll see, your amount may decrease because more people are paying in. And that's important. And then finally, I think one of the things I heard tonight was, I heard this from three speakers, maybe four, was the need for maintenance to be done more often. Question about the scheduled maintenance. And you're correct, no repair, in my knowledge, has been done on this ditch or this section since 1917 when it was built. And it does need to have a more thorough, more active schedule. And that's something the district, as a board, we should develop a more detailed and often looking into it. There's advantages to that because that would be minor maintenance and that cost is not shared to you, is shared to the general taxes of the entire district and not a benefit to every property that's involved. So there's advantages to having more maintenance that way. The system works better and everybody pays from Roseville, from Fridley, all the way to, you know, Hugo and Forest Lake and share it that way. So I'm very thankful that you folks mentioned that issue about the maintenance because I think that's something in the future that the district needs to develop a far more extensive program here. And with that, Madam President, I.
I, I did have one comment. There was quite a few questions about cutting trees and removing stuff and your equipment. And I, I can't answer any specifics, but I can say that on the other projects, I think that the engineering has been extremely proactive to try to work with the landowners as best they can in every situation. And I'm sure that they will do the same on this one.
Yeah, in fact, you can call in and make an appointment and they can come up to the property.
They'd be happy to talk to you about your specific situation. If we can save a tree or do anything we can do to try to help, we would be happy to do, if it can be done.
President Preiter, just to note here, during the board's discussion, Manager Wegman certainly identified that future process. Maybe Chris or Ashley could comment. Once we have those plans all the way developed up, you know, up to the 90% or more and the details come into much sharper focus, we do have an opportunity to look at those plans with individual landowners, look at the locations of fences or, or, you know, the tree that grandpa planted or these types of things and see how we may, may be able to work around them or cure those specific items. Chris could, or Ashley, would you be able to forecast when that might be a rough timeframe?
Sure, yeah. Madam President, so, yeah, our typical process that we've had for these kind of repairs is that we, once we get the plans and specifications developed, we schedule a landowner information meeting with those landowners that are along the ditch proper. And the purpose of that meeting is to get an introductory discussion of what the project is going to be looking like specifically. Because once we have those detailed plans, we can provide more detail on how it may look on your individual property. And, and what we've done in some cases in the past is send the landowners a customized map showing where that right-of-way is on their property and where that limits of construction may be on the property. And then, you know, that also provides the opportunity then for you to be able to schedule a walkthrough on your site if you have concerns about specific structures on your property, specific trees that you would hope to save. And, and we can look at that and see if that's feasible within the project. So it's certainly been the district's effort at every spot along the process to try to get as much feedback from you and listen to your concerns. And certainly that goes all the way up to the point of construction and afterwards. And so there will be more discussion on that into the future, but this certainly isn't your only opportunity to provide that feedback before the construction equipment get out there. And it won't be the only communication we have to you before that construction equipment arrives on the scene.
Nick?
Yes, President Preiter is just going to add, so we will send out notice again for those. It is important that you sign in. We certainly want to keep the communication open. So if you haven't, please sign your name. It's, we're not going to send you anything.
Oh, advertising.
That you don't want. You want to engage in government and be a part of the process here. So we welcome your comment.
Go ahead.
And the city would, would like to request that those meetings be held here so all of our citizens can come and participate. So any of the future landowner meetings, you're more than welcome to have Circle Pines City Hall, so please, it's more convenient for everyone to meet here instead of going down to Shoreview and, you know, the last public information meeting, you had two people show up and you have it here and you got a lot of few people from Circle Pines that show up, so.
Nice crowd, I mean, a lot of people, yeah.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion as read by Manager Wegman and seconded by Manager Wyant. Any further discussion? Not, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, thank you everybody again for coming and we will be contacting you as we move along.
Meetings adjourned.
You need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
In a second, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.